I mean, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. Amendments to the agenda, council members? Any amendments to the agenda? Oh, we get what we're gonna have to add.
Okay.
Just checking.
We'd like to add that our new business, item E, cool sunshade covers. And the information is distributed to your positions for consideration.
Item D is an added cool sunshade structures. Covers, sorry, no structure, covers. Any other additions? Oh, we get what we're gonna have to add. Kaylee, you would like to speak to us?
Yes.
Might just introduce who you are and you got the voting there. Appreciate you being here.
I appreciate you having me. My name's Michael Huntington and I'm senior class president at Bethany College. And I come to you today because for our senior gift, we're actually, just to start off, Linsburg, Kansas, was the first place to have disc golf. And so we're going to bring that back and that's what we're giving the college as seniors. And I have a map, it's had its rougher days of going through maintenance and then being passed around. But hole number three and four, which is right along the walking trail by the apartments, is city property. And however, Bethany College does know that property. And so I come to you today for approval if we can have a basket and a sign for the tee pad on those grounds. The baskets are farther away from the trail, so they're actually tucked in the trees. So, and when you, right-handed throwers, it typically goes left, but we have it aimed, so you're going away from the trail. And at every tee pad, there's a safety instruction guide, so hopefully Bethany Swedes will respect that policy. If someone's walking by the trail, that's one of the rules, is you can't throw. And if you have any questions about it, I'd love to hear about holes three and four.
What's considered a tee pad? What, what, how do you set it up?
So they can actually, I've just started learning about this golf. They can be normally pretty big, but just where you tee off to throw. For us, it will just be a sign with the rules and saying what hole number it is. So it'll just be the grass and then just a sign right there to say where you're starting off on your hole. And the baskets will have a trim of blue and gold and they're anti-rust, so they will always, they'll look nice, look clean. That was one of our main goals as a college standpoint, coming to it. But yeah, tee pads just where you start off to throw the discs.
Are there any concrete pads or anything?
No.
Something to sign in?
Yeah, for us, just a sign.
On hole placement, on some other disc golf courses, for one hole, they may have different placements for that basket. Do you anticipate doing that or are you just gonna go with one basket, one placement? All good?
Yep, just the one basket, one placement. And so the reason why we also split that one up for a two-shot is we don't want people, we don't want students doing a long drive. So those two are more so putter course or putter holes, but it will be one placement. And the other thing is there, you can always take them out and tap them. So we do have that issue where, okay, it's going on the trail too much, we can always tap it and take out the basket as well.
Trash, just made trash?
Trash. We can definitely find bin, we will, I will work hard and put a bin if we get it approved.
The, are you using just a regular frisbee, lightweight, plastic?
Yeah, so there's actually different kinds you can buy. And you have anything from a driver, which is typically a harder disc. And then we also have a putter. So the putters are the softer discs. In our bookstores, if we sell them, they will typically be putters because since it's a campus hall, since it's in-campus golf course, as you can see with the rest of the holes. So our main goal is safety, however, with the drivers, they can be harder, but they won't, according to our designer, you know, it won't break lamps, it won't break windows, car doors.
There's actually people who are hit.
Yes, people, yes, which is the biggest issue overall. And contacting Barton College as well as Cornell College in Iowa, we asked them the safety issues with people and no reports on students or community members being hit. And rules were also surprisingly, from Cornell, a student mentioned that the rules were followed pretty well by the students. So that was nice to hear.
And you say three and four are actually in the trees?
Yeah, the baskets tucked in right in between the two trees, so just the spacing.
Would you have anticipated if you were to get the, okay, you city property?
Hopefully, they could start installing Wednesday or Thursday.
Oh, so do we have an action tonight? What does that say for action, Greg? Is there any written stuff?
No, you need to, with the agenda.
But is there any written agreements or anything else, or verbal, or statute by council? Why would any concern?
You know, there aren't too many.
Yeah, this is. This is an attorney question.
Okay.
So we just kind of explain, explain the whole setup and talk about the baskets, how they're gonna be tucked into the trees. And also, and here's some more maps if you want some more. Hole number four, the other thing I forgot to mention is it is farther away from the road now. It's about twenty feet up. There you go. So it's definitely coming off the road a little bit more, but it is tucked in those trees.
Bill, the question was, they would like to start Wednesday or Thursday this week. What action would council?
What are they doing?
They want to install.
Install and use.
For the campus, but.
Along the valve open trail, we actually, was it the trail right away?
I think the council could approve it or disapprove it, whatever, just by motion.
Okay, doesn't take any?
No, I mean, it's subject to removal by the council at any time if they wish to do so, becomes a problem.
The one thing that was brought up to.
My question was my ability to.
We're really close to.
Is that any different than?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I will ask.
I think we're in the request, the council, and then the request from Bethany College on the agenda under new business.
Okay. E.
It would be that. I'm sorry, I don't have my alphabet.
It's gonna be D, we're not.
I'm sorry for the confusion that council has brought to the table here. D was cool sunshade cover. E would be Bethany College request. Are there other questions? Okay. There was a motion, is it second?
Is it in second?
Well, actually, it was just an amended number.
Yes.
I just want, do you want to give the full? Well, just amended included, item E, Bethany College request.
I don't want to mess it all up, but what we have on our computers says something, this printed thing says something else, so.
Okay, it's probably the old, so before we split it up into two holes, the. Oh, I'm sorry.
But he's looking at it now.
I'm sorry.
And would it be appropriate to ask that, the book, you stick around until we get to that agenda?
And community members, we encourage you guys to come out and play the course as well. I haven't mentioned that, we'd love to see.
We can play this course for free, included in our bachelor's.
Yes, maybe I'll bring out some snacks for you guys, too. Yes, you guys, though.
And I presume it is open for public?
Yes, we'd love to see it being used and used and active, so.
Other questions today? Yeah, we're seeing whether to session. Mayor's report.
Just so everybody knows, the print agenda is the official agenda.
That's fine. Twenty-one years, David, I've been on the council line, that's the first time I've heard of the print agenda.
Yeah, well, I like to hear.
It's time for me to go, I'm just learning that. So I am talking about elections and that, I wanted to inform the public and council members that I am not ready for reelection as mayor, so that position is wide open. There is also a council position open in each ward. Blaine, you have refiled, I understand, in ward three, three. Mark has not made a decision yet, but I believe it's on his calendar. Possibly get there and refile email, as indicated, run by or the others to myself. And I am working to fill the vacancy that Kelly left in ward four with that. And I've talked to, and looked for and talked to several, and if anybody has any suggestions there, I definitely would appreciate any names and that being passed along to me at any time. Talked to chief earlier, he said he had a disc weekend on, you know, some traffic things, but also just in some items being stolen, or whatever it might be, spring weather, I think chief usually brings out the people walking around, looking around, so I'm just telling the public to remember to lock up your areas, check your back garage doors and those kind of things, keep those things locked up, so that chief can just have those as a cop. I do want to say, May Day Parade was well attended this year, lots of Viking orange and that throughout the day. And I was in the parade and people yelling and all of that, so I do appreciate everybody who was there, it was a beautiful day, and I'm sure everybody had fun.
Were they cheering or were they?
Yeah.
There were some boos.
No, I was gonna. I took it all in stride. Yes. Again, I love the. President gets smelt here, I guess, I'm younger. Maybe easily take a look at those as we come going forward, there are several opportunities to get involved in sunshroom and golf courses on there and several others, so please look at those and attend if you can. Street board tomorrow, is it something special, is it open, you said, or is that an Alabama town deal?
Yeah, I'll write my report.
Okay, sorry to take your time there. No appointments tonight, no P and C, no business, new business.
Would you like to do the consent agenda?
I would, after we ask for new business. Consent agenda, what do you desire?
Motion to adopt the consent agenda, please.
Second, move it in seconded, roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes. Motion carried, thank you, Gary. Now for new business, I have May Day State Street overrun. Chris, are you setting forth, talk about that?
Sure. It costs more money than we expected.
Yeah, you get a council, you don't have to sit again.
This was just kind of put together, maybe a little quicker than should have been, and the drainage on the south side of the street was just not anticipated, what hole it was gonna take to tie that in the street with the new elevation change, so. We had to do a little bit of work and add some tubes and then to protect that from co-op traffic, we had to put some concrete over it and then to tie it all together. So we're just asking recommendations to approve $2,445 from JKC Building Systems to cover the extra concrete labor to finish the project out.
What is your desire, council?
Motion to approve.
Present a motion and a second, questions?
So the work is already done?
Yeah, the work is done.
And it will come out of the street's budget?
Yes, have a special budget.
Chris, I noticed, I think there's a tube that goes like off to the south, is there another box, what is that actually draining?
That, Willard is supposed to be trying to get permission from co-op to remove that. I don't know that anybody's figured out where it actually goes to. Whatever structure was there, I assume it was some kind of gutter drain or something, but Willard has been talking to co-op.
Did we run a tube over to it at this point?
No, that tube's just, it was just there.
Oh, the tube was actually.
And it's just going, draining over the ground out to the rest of the way to the new garden.
So it's mainly the part along the street itself?
The part along the street is what they.
There used to be a rough box that they filled it in, but.
It was a real tall structure, it just, it wasn't gonna work right, like, working together, so.
Okay.
But Willard's been working still to continually grade that and put a little filler in and try and get the drainage right.
Right.
It's coming around, so.
That area sure smoothed out, I saw that the roughness of it.
That's made a big difference.
How's it performed through the rings?
Actually, it's performed really well, there has been some carryover because it's fresh soil and we're getting some drainage. But overall, it's performed better than what I expected, actually, so. Once they get it smoothed out and get some structure to it, we're gonna try and seed it and get it, so at least it'll have a little bit of coverage and look a little bit better that way, and it's all said and done.
Here's my vision, do you see they're getting up and they're gonna spray it?
Well.
If you're looking at their ground, it's all dirt. There's not much of oil going on there.
There's very few weeds even growing in, so we're concerned that maybe the soil is just, that's what we're hoping to do.
Okay, additional questions for Chris? Roll call, please.
Betty? Yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. Item carried, item E, wastewater truck bid.
The wastewater truck currently is 2007 F-250. It was due to be replaced this year. The street department also has a 2000 Chevy S-10 that they use for spraying mosquitoes with. That was also due to be replaced this year. That truck was only budgeted for $10,000, so there was not enough to replace it with a new one. So what we would like to do is use that as a trade-in and then transfer the use of wastewater truck over to the street department. And it would still have some good life in it, it's just, it's been due for replacement because of budget time, a ten-year time replacement. And so we just want to reallocate it to that and the street department will get a truck that will be a whole lot better than what they have now and will overcondition that truck. So I'd like to recommend that the council approve a motion to purchase a 2017 Dodge 2500 Traceman from Midway Motors for $21,184. And a motion to approve the purchase and installation of the tummy gate from Interhydraulic for $2,164 for a total of $23,348.
I move that we accept this bid from Midway Motors and purchase of this truck and the tummy.
Bill, is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There don't seem to be separate bids or can you take this one?
Is it from the same supplier?
No.
I, I do it separate, so.
Do you want to make?
Yeah, let's, the goal is the truck. And I move that we accept this bid of Dodge truck.
Amendment, bring it around with that?
Yes.
Should the motion?
Should save it now.
So the motion is now, $21,184.
Is, do we have a second here?
Yes, yes.
Isn't, isn't this bid from Midway for $21,487?
That was bringing, excuse me, that was bringing that up. That was for the Ford 250 from Midway. They actually bid three vehicles, a Ford, Chevy, and a Dodge.
Do we have to note that we're trading in a vehicle or can we just accept the number? Accept the number, according to Gary, thank you. Any discussion on the bid, Midway Motors, for a Dodge 2500 pickup? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes. Motion carried now, undertake that motion for the tummy lift gate?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is to get a tummy lift gate from Interhydraulic in amount of $2,164. Need discussion?
It's roll call. Just say it's considerably under budget, which would be a good thing.
I shall, considerably under option.
Very good.
Roll call, please.
Betty? Yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Great, motion carried. Thank you, Chris. Next item is the safety door, northwest part of the front door replacement. Requires to get it, some work done to get it down away from a custom size to a standard size. Bid was received, Gary, do you want to take it from there?
Three bids were received, actually, we received four bids. Two of the other bids were in excess of how much, Gary?
Over $4,000?
The current door is a non-standard sized door, it doesn't function. It's part of the fact we haven't been able to use that door for over a year now. We actually, a year ago, started pricing just for a replacement door like it is, as a non-standard sized, the replacement cost was gonna be around $10,000. So stepped back to look at options, and the idea was to go back with a standard sized door with a transom window above it. And three proposals are presented to you, recommending the approval of the bid from Charles Seabird in the amount of $2,300, which is a term of new replacement of the front door, which would be the standard sized door with a transom window above it.
Make a motion to approve. Then move, is there a second? Move in seconded, discussion?
Is this a security door? See, the first bid there is for a steel door. Is this something like that, or is this a standard wooden door or something?
Standard wooden door, what we currently have, we can't, under, when we renovated this building, we couldn't put metal doors in here because it's not historic. Technically, no.
What did you ask?
Can we now?
Oh.
Isn't everyone in the door?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
And will list?
Yes.
So I'm only asking this for break-ins. Being sure we're secure as we can be.
Do you have the TV?
Other questions? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes. Motion carried, item D is a cool shade structure, and that is an item that was at your place.
So at the pool, if you can help before you soon, we have one 20-foot single pool umbrella shade structure that sits in the patio area of the pool. We also have two other, they're about 10 foot by 5 foot, what they call candy cane shaped awnings that are just placed as a baby pool. And these were installed along with the fabric that covers them in 2001, so we've had them about 16 years now, and the fabric bottom has actually lasted about entire 16 years, which is great. But it now is, you know, showing some wear on it and there's some holes in it, so it's definitely time for us to replace that fabric for both. And we got some bids from a couple companies. One is Shade USA, which is a company that did originally, but they're now under a new name, they used to be Sunport. They now operate under Shade USA. And their bid was for $2,175. And then we also received another bid from Ash Awnings, which is out of Slanta, Kansas, and they had a bid for $4,072, which is $72, which is what we have budgeted for. And then the other thing we looked at, too, was the current fabric we have is blue and green, so I would actually like to switch it to blue and yell, so that way it matches our speech sound here. And we do have samples, too, so we're kind of, this is the exact fabric that we use and these colors, so. And so we're recommending Shade USA for $2,175.
Council, what is your desire?
Motion to approve?
We've been a motion to approve Shade USA for $2,175, is there a second?
Second that.
And move in seconded, questions concerning shade structure?
Will the material, fabric material, the identical fabric material, there's quite a difference between the two bids, just want to make sure we're not getting a lesser quality from one than the other.
Yeah, so this, this is the exact fabric cover now, so we use exact same fabric.
Yeah, 15 or 16, 15 now, first of the actions we made. Additional questions? What's the delivery time?
They actually did not give any delivery time and we've been working on it for quite some time now, so that's what kind of delayed us a little bit, but if we don't happen to give these in time from the pool opening, our others are still getting that, we can throw those up and tell them to provide.
So we take these down during the winter months, so there's anything to installing these new ones?
Nope, one's put out of the string system and then the other one actually has these kind of, kind of rubber suction cups on it, and they go past each end of the umbrella.
Additional questions? Roll call, please.
Mark?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Eddie?
Yes. Motion carried, item E, Bethany College request. We'll turn to the podium and see what questions there may be, is there a motion?
Take a motion to approve the request to add the holes three and four along the walk-in trail.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Then move in seconded, discussion, questions? Why, you did so well the first time. Should be discussion here.
I don't know about that.
Pretty good. I guess the only question I would have, just any safety precautions that could be taken are placement of the actual green as it tours the trail.
Towards the waves.
Towards the trees. So having considered that.
What about the, what about the disc baskets? Is this a, I don't know, a pole that the chain, the hole, the steel rim?
Yep, stainless steel, and then the top will be, it is a painted blue and yellow plastic. Yep, but you do have stain chains.
They are removable, Mickey missed the power, I'm taking the captain and pull that Mickey, too.
I guess I have a question for Gary as far as mowing. Do you see any issues with your crews or mowing or trimming around?
No.
It's wrong in favor of disc golf. Didn't you say that Bethany College that thing?
Yes.
Well, see, the response is.
Council members, any additional questions?
I think the only concern that I have is, is taking people who use the walk-in trail and since they're shorter holes and you're used a, kind of hard, if you imagine, a frisbee slide tip. It's lighter, but still, the speed, I'd be concerned about somebody getting longed in the head, but I have to believe that people will use caution when playing when people are walking or running.
And hopefully, and of course, not all students, there could be a driver use on the disc golf course and that's out of our control, but we hope that our students will respect those rules, so.
What is the distance approximately between the trail and the trees there?
Ooh, I just marked them today, I would say probably a good 70, it's pretty far. Yeah, it looks a lot closer on the map, but it's quite, quite a big distance.
I can also tell you that in Walpark in McPherson, around their lake, they have a walking trail and also a disc golf course around the lake and trail.
I do just have to clarify one thing, but you mentioned that there were the shorter holes, but I'm reading this right, it's actually the second hole, just four of them.
Yes, so originally, that was a full driver, so it's very similar to the hole number two, that's how we originally. That's how we originally planned it because this is actually the land that we have a little more space. Because once we get on campus, you have to worry about buildings and certain windows and the parking lots are huge. So these are two of our bigger pools, but it was originally our longest hole. And then we decided for the safety of the trail, we cut it in two so it's less of a driver and more of a cutter.
It's interesting the way the course leads around the college campus. I understand that was intentional, but picking time the project is what?
I hope, from my standpoint, of course, I want, I'm here to speak for the class of twenty seventeen. However, learning about the course and I'm one to be outside and I hope it brings students together. Hopefully it's those, I've always been an orientation leader for the past four years and I hope it brings students out of their rooms. Hopefully we could get a club started, that's something we talked about. But just kind of a new thing, organizations, community members, just a way to have stress through fun and get out there and enjoy the weather.
With regard to the safety, it was a safety measure, it's going to keep it going around the outside of the course. We wanted as few blind shots as we could so that someone wouldn't pop behind the sidewalk or a building and somebody not see them before they threw. So that's the way it kind of traverses around campus like this.
And there's also safety signs we get with our package design that does have warning, people walking. And typically you could put it in a blind spot, but we can definitely put one there just a reminder there are people on the trail, so.
Will they play test ball golf on this course most often?
I mean, we play campus golf.
That was actually one of the considerations from the course designer. Maybe this, those could be permanent structures and not like bouncing test balls off of different statues and different things as some of our students do sometimes.
That's our activity now, so.
Additional questions? All those that favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
You're going to grant me?
Yes.
Awesome.
And don't feel compelled to say.
Yeah, the rest will be exciting as well.
I know.
Sorry, I'm going to register your files. All numbers. No executive concession denied, department reports. Okay, we'll start with you.
Hopefully this is exciting, that's right on. One to start off with, just to give you a quick update on youth baseball and softball. We just finished that registration and as most of you are probably aware, this is our first bowl sports season, not playing with McPherson. And so that was a little bit of risk going into it as far as numbers wise, what we're going to end up with. And I've actually been pleasantly surprised for the most part with it. Win for our team wise, we've been able to generate three of our own teams in almost every division. And so maybe we aren't really struggling with, it's our older girls teams. We just are getting, have a hard time getting girls to get signed up for that. So we have one division that has one of our team and one Marquette team that we're going to make work. But unfortunately right now, it's not looking so good for our older girls. We only have one team and Marquette didn't get anyone signed up for that division. So we're currently right now looking to see if maybe in McPherson or Salina possibly, if they do play through there. But I know at least in the lineup, their timeline and their season looking like is a little different from ours. So I'm not really sure if that'll work out a lot, but trying as far as being, find a solution for those guys. But other than that, it's looking pretty good. And then another interesting trend too that seems to be happening that is part of the reason why Marquette is kind of struggling to get members and we're looking through the team I had put together. There's actually quite a few kids from Marquette that are playing through us now instead of Marquette. So that really kind of hurts, especially in their boys division, they really didn't have any because a lot of them are kind of here. So I'm not complaining about it by any means, but it's just an interesting trend to see lately, so. Moving on to the golf course, and I first wanted to just give a big shout out to Men's Night and Mark Place Hall, they've done quite a lot recently to help out as far as getting the golf course clubhouse. Starting to look in a lot better shape, we painted all our cabinets in there and concession area, just writing that up. And then we're also going to be laying out some new carpet soon. And all this was paid for and provided for through Men's Night and Mark myself. So huge thank yous to them. And then I've also, I printed out our whole report that we're able to get from the computer as far as rounds go. And I know there were some questions from last time, that's what I can answer for you now. But to start, I printed off April and May for rounds. And for the month of April, in two thousand and sixteen, we only had one hundred and nine rounds to date. And in April this year, we've had four hundred and eleven. And that's cool. And then in May, and keep in mind it's only halfway through May that these numbers reflect, we had eighty-seven it looks like last year. And this time this year, we're up to two hundred and fifty so far in the month of May. So these last couple of months have been looking really good. And then to give you a comparison for January through May or middle of May last year and January to middle of May this year, we had four hundred and three that come through last year. And right now we're at nine hundred and eight that have come through. So rounds numbers are looking really good. And then there's a breakdown for that in my Polish report. It actually gives you what we booked on our computer there at the golf course and then it also tracks what we booked on the web. And this particular report I have, it does not pool it up via member or non-member and on our system, because I think people have to love this software. They must think of every single painting pool. And there's over hundreds and hundreds of reports on there. So this is showing on the web. We're actually not getting a lot of traffic on there. Looks like two were booked on the web plus another thirteen in April of this year. And then, or in April, sorry, in May, there were about seven on the web. And the total for this whole year, we only had fifteen or so actually come through via the web, fifteen to twenty come through via the web. So majority of it really had just some traffic coming in to the clubhouse and viewing it that way. And then another thing too is one we didn't get on the web. These were on the web or through Golf Now and so we actually never seen any of that money which is why it's not really tracking here other than that they came in. And then I also have another little update to you for memberships to date. Right now we have forty-five people that are having a single membership. We have thirteen that have chosen to do the single plus one. There's about seven that have family membership and six who have student. So we're pretty heavy on single memberships. That does give us, if I do the math, we have seventy-one full members right now. But I do expect that number to change since we are at the beginning of the season right now. So I'm sure that will go up. And that also doesn't include the members that have only paid half their membership thus far too, so. Any questions?
How's it compared to last year on membership? Total membership last year?
Total membership's the same now for the whole evening.
Kate, did you say, when you were talking about Golf Now, did you say we never see any of that money?
Right, because we, part of our, like, I guess you call it subscription with our software we have up there. It includes a tee time trade. So basically people can go to Golf Now, book us up and they can book a tee time on there. But then they book and pay for it on there and then that money is going straight to Golf Now.
Okay, so they promote? They do some promotion and then, okay.
Yeah.
Is that worth it?
I think it's worth it because like, and there was some concern where, okay, you know, online is a real big thing right now. And there was some concern that, you know, if I caught winter or last week, they start doing this, it's going to be money we're losing, but I mean, the numbers I'm holding on to support are not reflecting that at all, so.
Kate, is there a way to break down these four hundred or two hundred and fifty rounds or whatever it is for this year into paid and unpaid? I think that's a key.
Paid and unpaid.
At some point you need to.
Yes, and I would say the best reflection of that on here anyway is going to be your POS, there's point sale or at the clubhouse versus web online. Because on the web, there's no other way to book a tee time online without sending it to Golf Now.
So even just the local ones, how many points sell?
Local point sale, you want monthly or this whole time period, January to?
I think January to whatever, yeah. Whatever these is.
So web based, looks like about twenty. And then if you look at, just on the POS, there are people coming in right now, it's forty-seven.
So I have the nine oh eight one I'm hearing and basically about five hundred of those rounds. Of course, the web based, we don't get the four eighty-seven, I was really, the number's four eighty-seven, four ninety. So the twenty is just trading off for advertising anyway, so roughly half the rounds are paid rounds.
I actually, I would say they're more than that too. I mean, the rounds booked are eleven thirty-five and it also shows what rounds actually played, which that could be people that come in and pay, but then, you know, it's bad weather or something like that. So they don't end up actually playing it. So it actually was my weight, not eleven thirty-five that showed on here. And if you guys, I have plenty of copies of these, so if you guys have a copy, you can run them and look at them. And these copies are back to you too.
What, London Forge or copies?
It's also copies that has the May, April breakdown and then also has the February through May. But it's a little, even though I look at it, I still get a little busy because there are four.
Kate, how's the course looking?
It's looking good. We're still working on dealing with our closure that we have with fairways and weeds and dandelions. But a lot of that is due to the time of year and all the moisture we had. And so we're just going to make some adjustments on our movers that can really cut a lot of that out. The other thing is we can't, you know, to spray that, most of that's actually done for fall. So we can't really spray a whole entire fairway, but we do have some off spray out there. Everything's working on getting the batter sprayed as much as you can, so.
I have another question. The, are, the contract with the gentleman that's supervising in lieu of a golf course superintendent that's still working and when does that contract expire?
He's just one month, right, right?
Yeah, we pay him month to month, essentially nine months after the year.
And he's happy?
He's getting paid.
We're happy?
Yeah.
Everyone happy?
I guess I could just pile on the mayor's comments about tracking the number of rounds for not paying rounds. I think that's a very critical number as we kind of look at the long term availability of the course. It's great to know that members are playing a lot of rounds too, that's good. But at the end of the year, we're going to know a lot of anything.
Maybe in a training month, not training.
Yeah, I'll continue to sit through all the reports on there and see what I can find. There's got BM shirts and the hundreds and others they have, so it's just matter of time.
This is very important.
I mean, you had the splitting of the health now, is that correct?
Yes, we have Tobin, most of my, and he used to work in public works and he moved away, but he's moved back. It was for the summer, so he's out there helping dandy vote and whatever needs to be done. Also helping out with public courses.
Are you full of the staff? Moving out for the greenhouse.
Yeah, we're fully staffed up there. We're just kind of trying to get everyone graduated so that they can be out there working on a regular schedule, so.
Do you have more staff other than Tobin and Dan and however the course itself? Is there high school staff or any company that are?
We just have Dan, Tobin, and then we get a lot of help from the city guys too because they're not busy with their stuff. They got their family, they go out there.
Yeah, I respect that.
Yeah.
Additional questions for Kate, recreation, golf course?
I think it'd be key if we could catch Geodory too.
Yeah, I can do that too.
You know, when you get that done, we've done the super plan, we've done, we ought to have a study session at the golf course clubhouse. Get everybody out there, actually look out there and take the golf or.
I think we should. It's gone through a lot of changes last few months.
Appreciate everybody working on it.
I know that we talked about the success of Men's Night, but we had record attendance the first two Men's Nights. We started with forty-some, so forty-three or forty-six the first night.
We had like fifty-three last week.
Fifty-four last week.
Which was too many. And then Gator, who was working that night, also told me, beginning the idea, I mean, during the week, we're hoping to pull in a huge sales because it's not prime golfing time, but just with Men's Life might along in concession sales and these we collect, we had eight hundred dollars in sales just from that one too.
It really shows for those soft drinks, doesn't it?
Gator.
Keep up the work, Kate. All right, thank you, Gator. Gary, you want to go next?
We're gearing up for a couple of volunteer community service events this week. Tree Board, can't remember who asked. Tree Board tomorrow is doing one of their field days where they go out and tree the wood. And the Tree Board is not a young organization by any means.
Why do you try to let a partner?
She's young on the board, if you look at these profiles. But they, they do more work than any board that I've worked for. And in half a day they'll grow more branches and cause more trees for me. It takes me two days to catch up with the work that they do. And so after Tuesday, on Wednesday, they have Socrates Community Service. And we have over a hundred students, second and fourth graders. Holly Lawton, that's Greta Jay. She's going to be the fourth graders that are on ice and playing so well for us. But I still, meanwhile, I have seventy-five second graders heading to sweat some hard to pick up all the green tree wood. And I'll follow this stuff in parks and, they have a lot of fun, they get it done real fast. We also bring up a whole bunch of sidebar shopping. And we have them pick the handle and draw. Something that they would like to see in the park, something that the city could be acquired or built. And it's kind of like a little mini community survey. And we get a lot of good ideas, something to top off of that is drawing. But they have a lot of fun. It's important to do this, it takes a lot of staff time to do community service every week. And even the cost of the money too. But the goodwill that we build and we get to know some of these young kids that we hope are going to see grow up and that's a good thing. So we're happy about it. Dog Park, that group is continuing to meet. I'm meeting with a couple of the conveners, the leaders on that, tomorrow evening. They have a drawing, they have, I believe, a budget too, so it's going to be good to see that. I got a sneak peek at the drawing and it's got way more detail than Iowa's put together. So I'm looking forward to that. And then finally, I want to talk, I read a little bit about Swanson Master Plan in the Frigga course. Just a heads up, we're going to try to set up a study session about that. Swanson Park gets a lot of demand and it's not just the current facilities, the programming that's happening. But there, it's demand for the future and future uses. A lot of people are talking about it. We have ideas for how to grow and improve the park. But we really need a roadmap on that that the council puts together, which is a master plan. And that provides future reeferies because you're not going to be around the road. That roadmap is inconsistent. It also gives the budget plan a little more fall. So look for that and I think try to schedule that as soon as we can, we need to start a discussion. And that's all I have, any questions?
Is a new trigger amp going to be used next morning? Regotten. Greg, are you handling this or Larry?
I will handle it. Four items I want to cover with you first, you probably all heard about the one of our ransomware malware. Reesolutions, which is our contracted IT management service provider. We followed up with them and see our level of protection from that particular malware. Our system was actually, on the Microsoft side was, Microsoft, we had an update in March that fixed the vulnerability in the operating system. And so that was done in March for us. Also on the firewall, the firewall vendor uses signatures to either allow or prevent traffic from passing. Also on the firewall, the firewall vendor uses signatures to either allow or prevent traffic from passing. With the rules that are currently in place on our firewall, it automatically receives new signatures, such as with this particular one, it starts blocking it as soon as the vendor releases it. And lastly, we have managed antivirus on all of our desktops and on the server. The software vendor for this has notified us, they have the signatures in place to block the One Cry ransomware. This, so in essence, most of the mechanisms have been in place for us from a maximum of eight weeks ago to one week ago. This doesn't guarantee that we won't get it, but it minimizes the likelihood.
We have backup for all this?
Yes, we have an onsite backup and we have an offsite backup for everything.
A daily or how are you meant it?
I can't remember off the top of my head. I know it's at least daily and I'm not sure, I know we've tried, I've visited with them about more frequent backups, but I cannot remember what that was.
Have you heard of anybody that attacked a campus municipality during that?
I get emails, it's called Multi-State Information Analysis Center. And they publish information of threats, whether it be viruses, malware, et cetera. They also put out vulnerabilities in different operating systems and software programs, things like that. And when there's a new threat, they put out the vulnerability level for large, medium, and small size private businesses, large, medium, and small size government entities. And for small size, the risk is medium, which is typically a little higher than what we see. Usually it's low for small government entities. This was to the level of medium. But medium and large private businesses, the threat was high. For large government entities, the threat was high. House Bill 2424, there's a committee report recommending that this particular bill will be passed as amended by the Committee on Taxation. And in particular, this bill, let me get to the right page of the bill there, deals with exemption, property, because of the property tax law, this creates an exemption for employer contributions for social security, workers' compensation, unemployment insurance, health insurance costs, employee benefit plans, and employee retirement and pension plans. The reason this is important is these are some costs that we don't have a lot of direct control over. For instance, capers were dictated, the health caper contribution radius. We have been successful in managing our healthcare costs. But again, that is a segment of the economy that has grown cost-wise above and beyond 1.4% a year, which we get to increase this year. Workers' compensation, we've been able to manage that. But you start getting insurers taking losses, that's going to adjust your costs that we don't have control over. Whether this makes it through the full process, I don't know. Earlier in session, there was a bill to do away with property tax law. Kind of hearing from both the Senate and the House. Never had any committee votes, probably won't get any committee votes. And the primary reason is if it survived both the Senate and the House vote, it would probably be vetoed or whatever. But there wasn't, isn't. It's projected to not have sufficient number of votes to override the veto. So instead of putting it out there right now, the decision or the action has been, being action on that particular bill.
That's very much a good bill.
Well, I'll let you make them.
They're my political standup.
I've been communicating with the county appraiser. Our budget process has been accelerated because of the property tax law that we go beyond revenue over, we can go up 1.4% over last year in revenue with the exceptions of improvements for those properties that have changed in use. We can take full advantage of that particular property valuations. I can tell you that the budget you will see will not be the one that would seek an election but would stay within the guidelines that's set forth by the property tax law. But it still has accelerated some of the budget guidelines. I have been visiting with county appraiser. I should have some numbers tomorrow of what the valuation would be. That includes new construction, new improvement numbers. There is in front of the Board of Tax Appeals right now, a, an appeal for 2012, 2000, well, 2012 through 2015, 2016 was paid protest along with 2017. To get a reclassification of some commercial property to residential property in a different industry statewide that if it is approved by the Board of Tax Appeals, would have a major impact on our valuation. She's also going to provide me or us the numbers of what that impact would be if that is approved.
That's not originating here, it's something that's originated outside, is that right?
Well, I can. It is by Chapman and Associates for, actually, I'll put it out there that it's for storages. We reclassified from commercial to residential. Chapman Associates, I don't know who they are.
Wasn't me.
They didn't say Billy Ray Enterprise.
So are you choosing as residential instead of commercial?
The argument that they're making is that the majority of the items stored are household.
Cynthia Reddley, you could live with them.
No, you can't. They don't have things that a house requires, which are windows and electricity.
Minimum sanitation requirements, square footage requirements, there's a number of limitations. I mean, some units are large enough, but they don't provide the other amenities. The whole grid doesn't count.
Well, this is not ever, if you ever have a situation.
Tiny home.
So we'll have that tomorrow, which will, and we, as soon as we ever had, there won't be the certified numbers, but they will be good to start working with. Also, I'm not going to go through this, but the fund balance report through April is there. If you have a chance to look at it or have any questions, we would be happy to answer them.
Councilman Peters, any questions? I did look at the golf numbers, just out of curiosity here. So if you want a little advanced look at that and see what that looks like. Great additional items for administration budgets?
I don't have anything else unless somebody asks questions.
Some questions for Greg or Larry? Hearing none, are there other, are there items that you wish to bring out for future study sessions that we haven't talked about previously? Hearing none, I accept a motion to adjourn.
So.
In a second?
Second.
All of you bear say aye?
Aye.
Those things on, thank you very much.